Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting for Monday, October 12th, 2015. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please remain standing for the invocation by Father Tom Jones, Church of the Holy Spirit, 1305 Thomas Drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we gather to conduct the business of our city, we do so seeking your guidance and your blessing. Give our city council members discerning hearts as they listen to those who offer witness, both in support of or against the issues at hand. And enable those who approach the council to state clearly their thoughts and concerns so that our council may fully understand and properly assess the community impact of the options before them. Guide our council to make wise decisions in the work they do this day. That the decisions they make are made with right intentions, with a mind towards the proper stewardship of the resources they have been entrusted with and in the best interest of those they serve. Enable all present to see that what we hold in common as citizens of our fine city is more important than our differences, so that working together we might make a difference in the lives of those we encounter along our journey and those who depend upon us to act faithfully and responsibly. Finally, Lord bless all those gathered in this place, that they may know your love and grace and knowing it, embrace it, share it, and let it be what guides us as a community towards right relationship with you and one another. Amen.
Thank you, Father Tom Jones. And thank you all for coming out this evening to attend the council meeting. Second item on the agenda, may I please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Modri?
Mrs. Blood?
Present.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item 3, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C is under consent, 3D also under consent, item 4 under consent, item 5 special presentations. 5A, tobacco-free Sarpy presentation. Is there anyone here representing tobacco-free? Mr. Preister?
Mayor, I think McKenzie was going to be here. She may have been delayed in traffic. Maybe we could do, just switch the order of A and B and then she might have a chance to get here.
Do you need a motion for that?
Motion for that.
Anybody object?
No, I don't think so.
No objection. All right, we'll move on to item 5B, Off-It Joint Land Use Presentation. I think that's Greg Yule of MAPPA.
Good evening, Greg Yule, Executive Director of Metropolitan Area Planning Agency. And we have Matt Roth here, who's the project manager for the joint land use study, the MAPPA and the various communities worked on with Off-It Air Force Base. So he's going to go through a brief presentation on the results of that and next steps. I think it's a great project for the area. And as we discovered nearly here, there weren't any major issues, which is a sign of the good relationship between the base and the community, but want to expand that and strengthen that going forward. So I'll go ahead and take a seat and let Matt Roth take you through the presentation.
So for the past year and a half, we've been working on a joint land use study here for Off-It Air Force Base in the surrounding region. One of the things we'd like to show is that the joint land use study was not a regulatory document. It was just a proposal or reaction to anything. It's just a plan for going forward. There's some of the things we would like our stakeholders to do is to propose some actions in the future. And again, the goal is to promote growth. As you know, in Bellevue, Off-It Air Force Base is an important economic benefit to the area, about 1.3 billion per year. And we had three public engagement meetings throughout the process, one in January, March, and July of 2015. And we also had a public review of the draft for about a month between the 15th of July and the 15th of August of this past year. Three documents came from this evaluation. We had a background report, an actual study, J-LUS study, and an executive summary, which all of you should have in front of you. The executive summary is a shortened version of the joint land use study. We've given copies to members of our policy committee, which Mayor Sanders was on, and our technical advisory committee, which your planner, Chris Schuchuck, was on. Twenty-six factors were assessed. We found that 21 factors were actually evaluated in this area that applied. So those are the ones we looked at. And again, we had 38 issues identified. They were done through stakeholder interviews, committee input, public input, and some research. So the actual report has six chapters. What we're going to focus on today is the last one, which is the implementation plan. Chapter 2 is a community profile, which looked at everybody's comprehensive plans and looked how everyone's developed. Chapter 3 was the Off-It profile, which did the exact same thing for Off-It Air Force Base. And then we looked at compatibility tools, which includes zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and then assessed the compatibility. In chapter 6, we looked at the implementation guidelines and some, what we're going to talk about next is the military compatibility areas. Issues and strategies that we've looked at will be shown in these maps that we show right here. This is the military compatibility overlay district. It's used to find the geographic areas where J-LUS strategies are to be applied. This overlay district is an area that incorporates all the MCA's, which we'll go over later in a few minutes. Implementation of these overlays will require some amending to the zoning ordinances and everybody in this jurisdiction. Some of the things you'll see, strategies that came from this overall district are development of solar site guidelines and regulation of non-reflective surfaces, just in the general area. But when we go to the actual different MCA's through here, you'll see there are other strategies that came about. This is the safety MCA. What you see is that regulates types of lands and densities and intensities within the clear zone, which is in red, and the accident potential zones, which is in yellow and green. In the APC 2, in the accident potential zone 2, which is in green, you'll see some of the things we'll look at that could be developed. There are single-family, agricultural, low-density, office, and retail. And light industrial can be compatible with this area. This next one, what you're looking at is a noise military compatibility area. Bellevue has done a good job of keeping development out of the noise contours as to not have any negative effects with the development. But for the greater region, this will include off-site installation, greater than 65 decibel day-night levels associated with military aircraft activity. Some of the things that could be done if there were any development would look at building codes. And also, we would like to see some involvement with the ACUs when it comes to development of the ACUs at Off-It Air Force Base. We think that having the communities involved with that could help them plan for the future as well. What you're looking at here is the BASH. That stands for Bird Wildlife Aircraft Strike Hazard. It's about a five-mile radius. It's an FAA recommended standard to reduce bird attractants. Some strategies we found for this area is to increase landowner awareness and to minimize conflicts. What we're trying to minimize is man-made natural habitats. And we like to partner with other agencies that deal with wildlife to help make this more compatible for the area. What you're looking at here is the imaginary surfaces MCA. This is kind of helps determine building heights in this area. This next slide shows a better graphical representation. The transitional canonical surfaces are for every seven feet out, you go one foot up. And then you have the inner horizontal surface that is about 150 feet, and the outer horizontal is about 500 feet. In this area, we found strategies that will enact some drone ordinances in this area for the future, more of a long-term plan. Also, some tree heights and possible amending to zoning ordinances for these imaginary surfaces. This final one is a land MCA. This is more for awareness purpose for landowners, but you can also use it in other methods, like you can look for strategically locating screening around Off-It Air Force Base. And also, you can provide this for an anti-terrorism overlay district that limits heights around the base. And again, these strategies, there are 96 recommended strategies in the J-LUS. And these are the ways we came up with these strategies, again, through committee input, public input, coordination with agency staff at MAPPA and throughout the other communities. Our consultant, Matrix Design, helped us work on the joint land use study. And of course, we did research throughout this entire process. So our next steps will be to establish a coordinated committee. Through this, we had a policy committee. We'll probably just transition that to a coordinated committee as the name justifies what we actually be doing. And we'll identify strategies for short-term action. In the J-LUS, they had short-term, long-term, I'm sorry, short-term, medium-term, and long-term actions to look at. Part 3, evaluating and applying for grant assistance, kind of takes part 2 into account. What we'll look for is seeing what we can get funded in the short-term and long-term right now and try to get this project moving forward. And I know this is a quick presentation, so if you have any questions about this or the executive summary, wanted to answer anything.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, sure.
We have questions here. Mr. Cook?
Matt, is this information available on a website? I know that you said 96 recommendations that...
So, yeah, correct. We do have it on the MAPPA website. What we also have is the joint land use actual study in the back of the booklet that we gave Mayor Sanders and Chris, is a CD with all the electronic copies, or electronic copies of each document. So you can upload it on the city website if you'd like to do that, which is something we would recommend. Or you can have the city link to the MAPPA website, which has everything on there as well.
I'd like to also say that the background report, the executive report, any information you need, is right here up on the desk, too.
I'd like to see that attached to our website where people could see it. I think it'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Good idea. Are there any other questions from the council? Mr. Hanson?
Thank you. You know, I've seen this in some of the other air force bases, like Hill Air Force Base in Utah and Tinker down in Oklahoma. There's a lot of joint-use lands where, say Boeing will go ahead and take the land and they'll go ahead and build the hangar and then lease it, the air force would lease it back. And so they're not using, you know, air force milcon money to go ahead and do that. Now, I know that Off-It has quite a bit of land that's like behind Fort Crook. I think that ground back there is now all gone back into the military. Would that be something, that ground behind Fort Crook Elementary along 25th Street, would that be something that perhaps, you know, could be a civilian contractor, it could be a business or something on maybe a joint-use land, like a 50-year lease or something like that?
So what our committee would do is just evaluate the area in general, and we'd work with, this is supposed to be a publicly-involved project. So what we're looking to do is provide information that if a developer came in, they would be able to ascertain how we can develop the land. So I think, so what you're saying is, is this something that the land you're looking at, is it something Off-It owns? Or is it something that's...
That's, you know, it's actually federal property. It used to be housing. Now that housing's gone, it's federal property. And it's very close proximity to the new Strackcom building, could be a contractor. That's what I've seen out at Hill and also at Tinker, where individual companies will go ahead. And it's a win-win for the air force and it's a win-win for the community because they get a percentage on it. The air force doesn't have to go ahead and construct new buildings for on the base. They might even be able to use folks that are on the base right now, where the buildings are, say, dilapidated and they might need to be torn down. And then those folks can come off on a long-term lease. That's my experience with joint-use land.
So for this purpose, we would probably have that more be part of a communication piece, because if that is federal land, if they're looking to work with a contractor, we'd have to build, or we'd have to look at some way to get that process going. For right now, we're at the very early stages of the joint land use study, so it's very difficult to go into very concrete, step-by-step processes, as you're describing right there. But it is something we can look at in the future.
I believe, Mr. Hanson, there is a second study out there on partnership. And then there's a third with ACU. So I think eventually these will all merge in support of the base.
Yeah, the point is, we just want to make sure we have all these documents together out in the public and everybody's understanding what's going on. We kind of want it to be fluid and have us all working together.
I want to thank you, Matt. It was a long process, a very important process, that we reaffirm the Off-It Air Force Base presence here in the community and that they're welcome here in Bellevue. So thank you for that.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the presentation? See none? We'll go back. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Greg. On our special presentation, 5A, I do not see Nebraska Tobacco Free here this evening, but we do have some guest speakers ready to speak. So whoever would like to go first, please do so at this time.
Tom Richards, 1234 St. Andrews Road, Bellevue, Nebraska. Sarpy County Commissioner, District 3. It's nice to be back in the Bellevue City Chamber Hall. I used to sit where Councilmember Blood is sitting, so it hasn't changed much since the days when I was here. A few more signs, so. I was asked by the mayor to bring Scott Bovick with me, I'm going to introduce Scott in just a second, who worked on our drug-free, our smoke-free policy in Sarpy County. We implemented the action on July 1st. It's been about an eight-month, nine-month process trying to get to the point where we are. Scott was a former city administrator in Nebraska City and former assistant administrator in Blair and is now the deputy county administrator for Sarpy County and very good at what he does. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott and he will give you a quick presentation on what we're doing at the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
Thank you. Good evening. McKenzie Mulroy, actually, from Tobacco-Free Sarpy County approached the county board about a year ago and wanted to talk about an opportunity to create a smoke-free workplace environment. At that time, the county board was receptive and appointed our HR director as the person to work on the project. What happened after that was we formed kind of a committee. The committee worked with McKenzie on strategy and what would probably work best for Sarpy County. And so culmination of that was a smoke-free workplace environment policy. Obviously, the county is a little bit different than a city environment. We don't really have parks, anything except really county facilities. In March of 2015, the county board passed the policy effective July 1, 2015. That was an effort to give our employees and the public enough time to become acclimated to the policy and comply with it. We knew that there was some resistance, of course, from employees, because while we did have smoke-free buildings, we didn't have a smoke-free campus. And so we had to work out where the employees could go to smoke, what kind of punishment there would be if an employee was caught smoking on campus. We haven't seemed to have any issues with that. Once the policy was passed, the wellness committee got involved and we offered smoking cessation courses to employees that wanted to quit. We passed out advertisements about what kind of benefits are covered under our health insurance policy for employees to take advantage of that. One thing that the county board wrestled with from the very beginning was enforcement. And enforcement can be a difficult issue. Like I said, since it's in our personnel policy, it's easier to enforce with the employees. We also wrote in the policy that any contractor that's doing business on county property or at the county would have to be subject to the smoke-free policy. Additionally, a lot of the visitors that come to the courthouse are involved in the criminal justice system. They're working through our pre-trial program or coming to court. And so part of the requirements for those individuals is that they remain smoke-free on campus as well. The more difficult is just the general public that comes to the courthouse to do their business. And so the way that we approached that was not with a heavy hand, but signage and trying to educate the public on that. McKenzie's organization was very helpful in putting press releases in the newspaper, spreading the word, and trying to get the word out. We really haven't had much of an issue. I think the policy does read that if an employee sees a member of the public smoking, that they should approach them in a kind manner and ask them to refrain from smoking. I don't think that's a heavy expectation of our employees, but I do know that some of us do feel comfortable doing that. And most of the times when that's happened, folks have been very receptive to that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the policy.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bovick? See none? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'm Linda Ford. I live at, you won't be giving my address?
Please do, for the record.
215 Shadow Road, Bellevue.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I'm Dr. Linda Ford. I'm a local allergist and immunologist. In 1998-99, I was president of the Nationwide American Lung Association and served for many years as the medical director of the Sarpy County Department of Health. These comments are my own. Tonight, we're discussing whether or not to cease smoking in the Bellevue public parks. Health consequences of exposure to secondhand smoke are well documented, and I will not go into those today. As these consequences have become better understood, government's role has increased in the affording protections from secondhand smoke, particularly through implementation of clean indoor air laws. Outdoor smoke-free policies have also gained traction. As of December 2012, more than 600 municipalities have smoke-free parks and have more than 100 smoke-free beaches. Certainly, having smoke-free parks will decrease expense of maintaining the parks because the less cigarette butts to clean up. However, having smoke-free parks, to me, is about preventing tobacco use among youth. In 2013, the 31st Tobacco-Related Surgeon General's Report issued since 1964 described the epidemic of tobacco use among youth 12 through 17 years old and young adults 18 through 25 years old. The epidemiology, causes, health effects of tobacco use, and interventions proven to prevent smoking and health-related diseases based on scientific evidence found in this report supports the following facts that I wish to discuss with you tonight. We have made progress in reducing tobacco use among youth. However, far too many young people are still using tobacco. More than 600,000 middle school students and 3 million high school students smoke cigarettes even though they cannot buy the products. After years of steady decrease following the Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement 1998, declines in youth tobacco have slowed for cigarette smoking and stalled for use for the smokeless tobacco. The latest research shows that concurrent use of multiple tobacco products is a common among young people and suggests that smokeless tobacco use is increasing among white males. Every day, more than 1,200 people in this country die due to smoking. For each of these deaths, at least two young people, youths or young adults, become regular smokers each day. Almost 90% of those young replacement smokers smoked their first cigarette by 18 years old, and 99% started by age 26. Almost no one starts smoking after age 25. Progression from occasional to daily smoking almost always occurs by age of 26. Cigars especially, cigarette-sized cigars, are popular with the youth. One out of five high school males smoke cigars, and cigar use appears to be increasing among other groups as well. Tobacco use by youth and young adults causes both immediate and long-term health damage. One of the most serious side effects is nicotine addiction, which prolongs tobacco use, causing increased physical damage. The younger the youth are when they start using tobacco, the more likely they will be addicted. Youth are sensitive to nicotine and can feel dependence earlier than adults. Because of nicotine addiction, about three out of four teen smokers end up smoking into adulthood, even if they intended to quit after a few years. Cigarette smoking by youth and young adults is proven to cause serious and potentially deadly health effects immediately and into adulthood. Early cardiovascular damage is seen in most young smokers. Those most sensitive die very young. Early abdominal aortic atherosclerosis has been found in young smokers, which affects the flow of blood to vital organs such as the lungs. This leads to reduced lung growth that can increase the risk of chronic obstructive pulmonary disease later in life and reduce lung function. Of every three young smokers, only one will quit. One of the remaining two of the smokers will die prematurely from tobacco-related disease. Tobacco companies spend more than $1 million an hour, $1 million an hour, in this country alone to market their products. Tobacco products are among the most heavily marketed consumer goods in the United States. The tobacco industry has stated that its marketing only promotes brand choices among adult smokers. Regardless of their intent, this marketing encourages underage youth to smoke. Nearly nine out of 10 smokers start smoking by the age of 18. Of these, more than 80% of underage smokers choose brands from among the top three most heavily advertised. The more young people are exposed to cigarette advertising and promotional activities, the more likely they are to smoke. Extensive use of price-reducing promotions has led to higher rates of tobacco use among young people than would have occurred in the absence of these promotions. Many tobacco products on the market appeal to youth. Some tobacco-sized cigars contain candy and fruit flavorings such as strawberry and grape. Many of the newest smokeless tobacco products do not require users to spit, and others dissolve like mints. These product types are packaged in small, tea-like sachets and dissolvable strips and lozenges. Young people find these products appealing, in part because they can be used without detection at school or other places where smoking is banned. However, these products cause and sustain nicotine addiction, and most youth who use them also smoke cigarettes. Through the use of advertising, promotional activities, packaging, and product design, the tobacco industry encourages the myth that smoking makes you thin. This message is appealing to young girls. It is not true. Teen smokers are not thinner than non-smokers. Because young people want to fit in with their peers, youth are vulnerable to social and environmental influences to use tobacco. Messages and images that make tobacco use appealing to them are everywhere. Youth who are exposed to images of smoking in movies are more likely to smoke. Those who get the most exposure to on-screen smoking are about twice as likely to begin smoking as those who get the least exposure. Even though images of smoking in movies have declined over the decade, in 2010, nearly a third of top grossing movies produced for children, those with ratings of G, PG, and PG-13 contain images of smoking. So why is this all important in city parks? Youth identify with peers as they see as social leaders, and they imitate their behavior. They see smoking in their social circles. Movies they watch, video games they play, websites they visit, and the communities in which they live, including outdoor activities. Smoking is often portrayed as a social norm, whether indoors or outdoors. And young people exposed to these images are more likely to smoke. Comprehensive, sustained, multi-component programs can cut youth tobacco use. As part of these comprehensive programs, smoke-free policies affecting outdoor municipal spaces hold great potential to promote nonsmoking norms and to provide additional motivation to quit smoking. Successful, multi-component programs prevent young people from starting to use tobacco in the first place and more than pay for themselves in lives and health dollars saved. Prevention is critical. Strategies that comprise successful, comprehensive tobacco control programs include mass media campaigns, higher tobacco prices, evidence-based school programs, and sustained community-wide efforts, including smoke-free laws and policies. The Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement 1998 curtailed much of the advertising that was particularly appealing to young people. The passage of 2009 legislation gave the U.S. Food and Drug Administration the authority to regulate tobacco products and tobacco advertising. Now, you have another important means of helping to decrease the appeal of tobacco use to this population by instituting smoke-free policy for Bellevue city parks. This policy is only one piece of a comprehensive program. of a comprehensive program, excuse me, that we know works to prevent tobacco use among young people. You have the knowledge to prevent the needless suffering of premature disease caused by tobacco use as well as save lives. By strengthening and continuing to build upon effective policies and programs, you can help make the next generation tobacco-free. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Are there any questions? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. I appreciate your perspective. Much of what you said was really addressed at prevention and preventing young people from starting or continuing, and your focus seemed to be setting a positive example in parks particularly, where young people are easily influenced, one of many, for smoking, by the role models who are teachers, coaches, people helping them with athletic events.
Correct.
So, you're not, I didn't hear anything about being punitive. I didn't hear anything anti-smoker. It was protecting youth from the exposure and the likelihood of getting addicted themselves. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. And I think we just heard from the county that they, it wasn't a matter of calling the police out to the parks and arresting people. It's simply peer pressure with signs, helping people to realize you're setting an example. Let's be a good example to our young people. Is that accurate?
And awareness.
The awareness?
The awareness of it, I think, is a very important one part.
Okay. Thank you very much. It was a very thorough and a very good presentation. I appreciate your service.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Ford? If you could please sign in, Dr. Ford, appreciate it. There should be bullets.
Sure, well.
And if we have anyone else that would like to speak, Dr. Mary Hawkins, please.
Hi, I'm Mary Hawkins, four-fourteen Greenbrier Court in Bellevue, and president of Bellevue University. I'm not sure that you're all aware, but the university has been a hundred percent smoke-free campus since November twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, and we wrestled with a number of options along that path, but they just didn't work. You just really can't house or pull smoking away from where people walk, or people are gathering, or visitors and friends are crossing. So, after a number of attempts at that in two thousand and thirteen, we assembled a group of both smokers and non-smokers and asked them to address a new policy for the university, and we put it into effect on the Great American Smokeout, November twenty-first. And I can honestly tell you, and to my surprise, we have not had complaints or problems. We haven't had our security people chasing smokers around campus or anything like that. It's just gone very smoothly, and I would agree with Dr. Ford and the folks from Sarpy. Most of it happens with, we put signage up, and I think a little bit of pressure from people who, you know, look at smokers and remind them that this is a smoke-free campus. But we've been two, it'll be two years, very shortly here, we've had no problems, and we needed to do it because of all of the effects that are well-known in the literature. Dr. Ford illustrated those, and problem is, is that smoking is not very containable on any, any public grounds, and you've got people walking through that have a lot of health concerns about smoking. So, that's the path that we took, and it's worked, and it's been successful, and we're continuing it.
Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. Are there any questions? See none. Thank you very much. Dr. Hawkins, could you please sign in as well?
Sure.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the council? Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number two-zero-one-five-dash-two-one.
Second. Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? Mr. Hanson?
I guess I'd like to maybe look at the other side of the fence a little bit. I worry about resolution versus ordinance. Is a resolution just, is it enforceable? Is it unenforceable? If I'm in the park, and a person in the park comes up to me and said, hey, you're smoking, put that out, and I said, I don't think I will, what's going to happen? Do they call the police? Do they call the public works? What happens? Now, let's say I have a commotion over there in that park. So, can you maybe explain to me the difference between a resolution and ordinance as it relates to this, first of all?
Mr. Sullivan?
A resolution and ordinance has essentially the same force of law. We don't put any penalties under the resolution. If we were going to do an ordinance where there were penalties, I mean, if you're going to do something with penalties, then I'd do it under an ordinance. But either way, it's a rule of the city, whether it's by resolution or ordinance.
Okay, so, let's say that happens. Who, is somebody going to come down and throw me out of the park, and who would do that?
Parks Department.
Parks Department? Mr. Burlowitz?
That's what it says, Dan.
Okay. Does it, okay. I haven't looked at the whole of the details.
That's what it says, and there, I just wonder what their enforceability is to, on that resolution. I'm just trying to get some clarification here, if it's, if it's something that's going to be, I understand, you know, it's always been a controversial thing. It's been going on a long time, and there's about, I think, twenty, twenty-two to twenty-five percent of our, of the U.S. citizens that smoke, and they probably have about, you know, forty-seven million, I think, last statistics from, from the state today that I looked up. So, I'm just kind of trying to figure out, as we adopt something like this, it sounds good, but I concern myself with the enforceability of it and over having people just saying, you better not smoke, you better, and you could have a big controversy down there in the park, so.
Mr. Buckley?
I just want to give Mr. Hanson some clarification on the enforceability. I assisted, or I worked with Mike, or Francis, in drafting this resolution. We discussed it a little bit at our agenda meeting last week with Captains Duke and Holt on enforceability. We thought it'd be better as a resolution than having, you know, police called every time somebody was seen lighting up a cigarette in a public park. But if the, if a park's department employee or superintendent asks them to leave because they're violating a policy, and they don't leave, well, then they're trespassing, and then the police can be called and have them removed. So, that's, that's, we thought, right now, that's the best way as far as enforcement of this.
And I, I believe that some of the statistics that I looked at, that some of the, and the campus, like, for instance, Sarpy County's campus, but I think they have some designated, designated smoking areas. Bellevue University is a private institution. They can do what they want. You can have employees and control them, but when you have the public, in which the main folks that are going to be down there is going to be all the public, and maybe a couple of public works folks that are going to be there, enforceability of it, and the fact that, it just seems like our government is constantly getting into everything that we do, and, you know, I just have an issue with that, so.
Councilman Blood?
I do know that University of Nebraska Omaha has already announced that they're going smoke-free, I believe, in two thousand and sixteen, as far as public institutions go. You know, I, I look at it, you know, I'm down at that park every Saturday from May to October. There are signs all over that say you have to curb your dog. I don't see the police out there every time a dog makes a poo on the yard and somebody doesn't pick it up, but that certainly happens every single Saturday. What we're doing is we're putting signs up that say what our expectations are, and you're making it sound like there's some sort of police state, especially when you're saying the government's telling people what they can and can't do. That is a place, parks are a place where children play, where children participate in sports. You know, we're not violating, you're right, saying that you can't smoke. We're asking you not to smoke in a park around children. And I think that that's, as being, the people responsible for the city of Bellevue, and what we want people to know about Bellevue, especially if you're military and you're bringing your family into this community to live, and you as a realtor understand this, they look for quality-of-life items. For me, as a parent, and a grandparent now with seven grandchildren, I don't look kindly to people who smoke around my grandchildren. They have the right to go somewhere else. Why should we have to leave when we choose to play on a playground or in a park? I don't think that that's, that's the right way to look at things. I hear what you're saying. Everybody thinks there's too much government in certain things. But the same token, are we responsible for the quality of life issues here in Bellevue? And as the council, I think we are.
Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Ford and for coming out and giving a very intelligent description of the heart of the issue, and that is smoking. It's not smoking inside a building. It's not smoking outside of a building. It's smoking. I'm a smoker. I understand that. I have understood that my whole life, ever since I made that choice. It's a choice. It's legal. It's a legal product, so is snuff, smokeless tobacco, pipe tobacco. They're all legal products. I have to concur with, with Mr. Hanson with respect to my concern about an order, or a resolution, which I believe contradicts what you said, Mrs. Blood, that it actually does say, it parks shall be tobacco-free. It doesn't give you the ability to go in and smoke. I can go in and violate the law if I want, but it says they will be tobacco-free. I believe that we have done a very good job in this city, in our public buildings, making them smoke-free. That happened a long, long time ago. I remember when, when, when the employees in this building used to smoke at their desks, in their office. We get into a scenario now where, and Mr. Hanson and I talked about this earlier, I don't want people smoking next to me at a football game. I don't want them smoking next to me at a softball game or at the pool, around children. I have issues with that. But I am opposed to restricting the public that pays taxes in using public parks from that restriction. I think that's not right, and I almost believe it's discriminatory in, in that context. So, outside of, outside of just land, landmass, I kind of support this with respect to the areas that are specified, but when it comes to just the public park grounds, if I want to go out and walk in the park and walk my dog on a leash and have a cigarette with my wife, I should have the right to do that.
Councilman Blood?
And I respect, I know we have smokers on the other side of the room here, so I respect your opinion, and, and I don't know where you're coming from because I've never smoked. But when you talk about legal things, alcohol is legal too, so I should be able to walk through the park with a beer then.
Well, with all due respect, Mrs. Blood, this is not about alcohol. This is about tobacco here.
But based on the logic that you just shared, which was tobacco is legal, there's no reason that you shouldn't be able to walk through a public park with it. Alcohol is legal. I'm an adult. Why can't I walk through the public park with a beer? I don't walk through a public park with a beer because I would be influencing people and children in a negative manner. It gives the wrong message, and it's, it's a public park. Why should, the fact that I might want a beer, why should I have the right to go into a public park and start drinking there in front of other people's children? It's, to me, it's, to me, it's the same thing. Yes, they're both legal, but as adults, we have responsibilities, responsibility to set examples. And you said it yourself, you don't want to sit next to somebody at a football game or a ballgame. Do you want to, when you have grandchildren one day, I don't know if you have grandchildren already, but...
Four and a half.
There you go.
Four and three quarters, actually.
And I don't know if you're going to smoke around them or not, but if you choose not to, and then you take your children, grandchildren to a park, you're not going to be given that option. And again, we're not talking about a police state. They've already said that about the other campuses and other locations. I think sometimes we overthink things and make it into a much bigger issue than it truly is. My guess is that we, if indeed we were to follow through with this, that'd be the last that we heard of it.
Mr. Burlowitz?
Yeah, probably one thing I'd point out, the resolution does indicate that park staff may ask, may ask someone to cease or leave the park. There's nowhere in the resolution that implements any punitive action against an individual. Yeah, as Tim Buckley indicated, conceivably, if someone was asked to leave because they were smoking, they refused, and they didn't, and they came back and did it again, it could be considered trespassing. I don't think that would be the intent of the way we would implement it. I think, again, it'd probably be similar to Sarpy County, as well as the university, that it would be more a good faith effort that we'd ask, people would be asked to, to abide by the policy. As administrator, my intent wouldn't be to have us up there citing people. For one thing, there's a difference between that and when, and someone that are eighteen years of age goes in and attempts to buy cigarettes, or is caught smoking. There is clearly law to address that. I think this would be more or less intended to be the fact that people would be willing to abide by it if it's brought to their attention. I wouldn't view it as strong-arming people or arresting people. We have much better use of our police than to do that. I've discussed that with the chief already, and I don't, I probably would be maybe adhered to, hopefully, similar to what the county has and Bellevue University. In regard to employees, that's a different issue. I mean, that then becomes part of following city policy, and, and they could be disciplined for violating it. We currently have smoke-free buildings, smoke-free vehicles. We've had people violate it over the years, and there's been some disciplinary action. So, there's two different populations. There's employees that we do have the ability to expect that they abide by it. The public is something I would view as we would ask them, but I clearly wouldn't foresee us arresting somebody. Again, we have much better use of our police resources. From administrative standpoint, I can tell you that would not be the intent as to how that policy would be implemented.
Mr. Sullivan?
Just wanted to make a point, a clarification. There was something mentioned about the county having a designated area. The county's entire program is smoke-free on all county property. If they have a designated area to smoke, it's unofficially my front yard at my office. But other than that, the cigarettes are piling up like crazy, but everywhere on the county is smoke-free.
Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of comments, and then we do have a celebrity, actually, here today that I hope we can hear from. I don't know if any of you have seen, but in a recent Bellevue leader, it talks about Madison Laramore, who, from Bellevue, went to Washington, D.C. to address Congress. And she unfortunately was detained a little tonight, but I believe she's here, and we have a couple of other people. So, I would ask that they come up to give their presentation. I would just comment in terms of enforcement. The tobacco companies have long used doubt and imagery to create confusion for people so that the actual issue is skirted, and the issue of enforcement is one of those issues that has been used very successfully by very well-paid advertising industries to create doubt in people's minds. So, if we're looking at a place where young people go, where we're setting an example, and where taxpayer money are funding something, let's look at Memorial Stadium in Lincoln. Taxpayers have been funding athletics and the university and trying to set a good example. That stadium is completely smoke-free. You're not allowed to smoke in the stadium, one, because you're very close to people, but it is funded. I think this is important, just for what Dr. Ford said. It's exactly the example. That's the issue. Enforcement is not the issue. Signs, peer pressure, we heard from Dr. Hawkins, it's not been an issue for the last two years at Bellevue University. Enforcement isn't an issue at the county. The other cities and places that I have contacted have had no enforcement issues. It's rare. It could happen, and I think we have in place the Parks Department, who is permissive in responding, and if it becomes a problem, only then would the police be called. It's not really an issue, and I don't want us to get sidetracked in something that is not germane to the issue, only transient, trans...
Transitory.
Can't think of the word. Only related. But, Mayor, I would ask that whichever of the young people, or Mackenzie Mulroy, who's here, if they would come up to give their presentation. The other presenters have already finished.
Do you want me to come?
The order that you would choose.
Please, and state your name, and please sign the clipboard, each of you. Thank you.
I apologize. I was under the, the, under the understanding the meeting started at seven, so I apologize for my tardiness. I'll sign this really quick for you, and I will not speak long. My name is Mackenzie Mulroy, and I'm the coordinator for... My name is Mackenzie Mulroy, and I'm the coordinator for Tobacco-Free Sarpy. I just wanted to give you a little history and just some information on what we do here in Sarpy County. We're also known as TFS, so that's kind of how I'll refer to our organization. But TFS was formed in 2001 to strengthen tobacco control efforts in our community. Our mission is to promote and advocate for tobacco-free lifestyles through public policy, education, and enforcement. We're a coalition of health-related organizations who come together to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke, reduce health disparities related to tobacco use, reduce youth access to tobacco, and educate, oh, and reduce tobacco, and reduce tobacco use throughout Sarpy County. TFS works to educate the community on the benefits of tobacco-free and smoke-free policies on business campuses, multifamily housing, outdoor recreational facilities. And we also work with local law enforcement to conduct regular compliance checks of tobacco license holders. These are an important part of our mission, because if youth can't purchase tobacco, then we know they can't use tobacco. Tobacco-Free Sarpy provides technical assistance, education, and signage to help people who, who voluntarily create, to voluntarily create tobacco-free or smoke-free policies. Smoking is a leading cause of preventable death and disability in United States. According to the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, smoking kills more people than alcohol, AIDS, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides all combined. And this does not include the thousands that die from the use of spit tobacco. This year alone, approximately 480,000 Americans will die from smoking and exposure to secondhand smoke. Tobacco use in Nebraska totals $795 million annually in healthcare cost. We lose 2,500 Nebraskans each year from smoking-related causes. And if this continues, an estimated 38,000 kids who are now under the age of 18 in Nebraska will die prematurely from smoking. And these numbers are preventable. Tobacco control requires communities to take a comprehensive approach towards tobacco control programs. Local endeavors are the most successful, and then these are often expanded and then built upon, to develop larger, regional, and statewide efforts. Comprehensive tobacco control programs involve changing social norms, changing attitudes towards tobacco use, changing the environment, and changing policy. Tobacco control is not solely about changing an individual's behavior, but about changing a community's awareness around tobacco use. We have learned over the years that telling kids not to smoke is not an effective way to reach our youth. Studies show that a change of the social norm of public tobacco use is the key from keeping our youth from ever starting to use. We kind of go by the saying, if kids don't see it, they won't start to use it. Through our efforts, Tobacco-Free Sarpy has identified some of the following. We can, we found a list of 53 businesses in Sarpy County who have tobacco-free campuses, 168 buildings, multifamily housing buildings who offer smoke-free housing, and we have identified nine outdoor recreational facilities that are smoke-free. One of our greatest accomplishments is our 100% compliance rate in fiscal year 15, our fourth quarter, of all of our, none of our tobacco license holders selling to youth. And these achievements mean we're limiting, we are limiting youth access to tobacco, creating tobacco-free work environments, and extending tobacco-free environments so Sarpy County residents can enjoy smoke-free homes and activities. We are changing the social norm of tobacco use and you, and limiting exposure to secondhand smoke. I do have some youth here that would like to kind of talk to you about their efforts of what they've been doing here in Sarpy County as well.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is also my sister, if she wants to come up. But I'm Madison Laramore, and I got involved with Tobacco Control three years ago with No Limits, which is Nebraska's first youth-led anti-tobacco board that really focuses on the manipulative marketing tactics of the big tobacco industry. And the first two years, I served on the board as reporter, and the final year I was co-chair. And I just graduated out of the program, but now I'm working with Tobacco-Free Kids as a national youth ambassador, after winning the 2015 Central Youth Advocate of the Year Award with them. So again, I want to thank you all. I'm very excited to be talking about this. The very first year that I got involved with No Limits, our focus was smoke-free parks. So it kind of feels like I've come full circle a little bit here today. A couple of things I want to point out here. When we first did smoke-free parks, one thing that we went and told the youth that we were speaking to was try to come up with words to describe tobacco products and parks. Try to come up with things that both of them have in common. And what we found is that they really have nothing in common. You know, tobacco products destroy and addict people, and really just have never been a sign of good health or anything, while parks are a symbol in our community that we're trying to stay healthy and searching for wellness. And also, a fact I have that we talk about in No Limits is, according to the 2011 Nebraska Adult Tobacco Survey, 93.4% of Nebraskans think smoking should be no longer permitted in outdoor parks. And this includes smokers and non-smokers. My freshman year, I created a video going around and interviewing people in my neighborhood about the prospect of smoke-free parks in Bellevue. And what I found was, everyone was in support. My dad was a former smoker, and my neighbor also was a smoker. And they talked about how they know they are a role model, whether they want to be or not, to youth. And they definitely did not want their children to take up their addiction, or other kids who are seeing them use these products, take up their addiction. Not to mention the cigarette butts, number one littered thing in the world, as well as now considered toxic waste because of how harmful it is to the environment. And I also want to say that I think this policy should include all tobacco products beyond just traditional cigarettes. And that is because of the social norm. E-cigarettes are on a tremendous rise among youth. The use in the nation has tripled between 2014 and 2015, according to the CEC. And a lot of this tripling and rise of e-cigarettes is mainly due to seeing other people use it and the social norm enforced. There's this huge push on social media and in the community where youth are seeing these products. And it's really about stopping the new tobacco addiction or nicotine addiction of the future, because that's really what these products are. It's just evolving in a different way to addict and get people to buy the products. I also wanted to talk about reinforcement. I heard you briefly touch on that when we walked in. And I think just a sign could go such a long way in showing that we respect, you know, everyone's right to be healthy and have a nice environment to get together with friends and family and the community. And it's a great way to show that Bellevue cares about the wellness of its citizens. It would be out of respect for maintaining a healthy environment for all, especially future generations and youth. And I would like to ask, as, you know, a student here and a youth, that, to make all parks in Bellevue's tobacco-free and really consider this as we move forward. So thank you again for, listen, I tried to keep it brief, and any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Laramore. Don't forget to sign in, please.
Oh, sure, yes.
And I think Mr. Preister has a question.
Yeah.
I want to congratulate you on the youth leadership that you have shown, not only here in Sarpy County, but as an ambassador to the youth and to all of the responsible people of Sarpy County, that you're concerned about others, you're concerned about their health, you're concerned about setting a good example, and you are a good example in doing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions?
One thing I want to correct or point out, the definitions do include electronic cigarettes.
Okay, perfect.
This does include electronic cigarettes as well as others, because of-
Perfect.
Just the reasons that you have cited.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laramore.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry. Okay. I am Brooklyn Laramore, which Madison's sister. And I am also involved in No Limits Nebraska, which, like she said, is Nebraska's first seed-led anti-tobacco movement. And this is my second year on the board, and I'm, this year I am co-chair. So, but we've had many initiatives on smoke-free parks and tobacco-free parks. But I'd like to focus on how tobacco-free parks will promote healthier communities and can help defy social norms with, that are associated with tobacco products in parks. So secondhand smoke is still harmful in outdoor settings. And according to researchers at Stanford University, they are, they say that, they say that outdoor smoking is comparable on average to indoor levels. And the US Environmental Protection Agency has also classified secondhand smoke as a Class A carcinogen. So we also, we know that secondhand smoke is harm, harmful and dangerous, but cigarette litter is also very dangerous. And it's actually the most littered item in the world. And Keep Tobacco, or Keep America Beautiful Packet, Pocket Ashtray Study found that only about 10% of cigarette butts are actually properly deposited in receptacles, which means they're not biodegradable either. So it can take up to 15 years for them to break down. And since they are not being properly disposed of, that causes problems with other, like litter, like I had previously said. But they're also dangerous to children and pets, or other animals that could possibly ingest them, which has detrimental consequences. So I think that Bellevue parks should become tobacco-free so they can keep Bellevue parks beautiful and healthy and safe, and also help children learn that when they go to parks, that they won't see tobacco products and butts, so then they can help break down those social norms that could make them more susceptible to using tobacco products.
Thank you, Ms. Laramore.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? See none? Are there others?
It's not a public hearing.
We've not allowed the public to speak.
We would have to do the rules, and that hasn't been done.
It's all right. I'll only be a second. You talk long enough so I can-
Hold on. Mr. Cook. Mr. Cook.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Cook has a motion on the table.
To make it a public hearing. My concern is it wasn't posted that way. But, and it probably should have been if we were going to let people come up here and talk. Because what has happened here is we've allowed people to talk that are very dear to one side, and we're not having the opportunity where it was posted as a public input hearing, to where we could get people maybe talking on both sides. But I'll make the motion to open up it as a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Second. Mr. Hanson, discussion. See none? Please vote. All voted yes. Thank you. Will now open for public hearing? Did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Brian Stednitz, 1412 Warren Street. It's a little scribbly, but I don't have much to say, just to clarify some points. I think we were talking about, you know, drinking in public parks. Unfortunately, you can't do that because of open container laws, not because, you know, drinking is legal. It is legal, but you just can't do it because of open container laws. If we didn't have open container laws, it might be another story. So it's apples and oranges on that part. But I, you know, people who smoke are taxpayers, and unfortunately, we tax them the most. It's a big sin tax. It's big revenue for cities and states and municipalities. So I mean, it's, it's like devil's advocate, oh, we don't want people to smoke, but we'll tax them left and right because we want to keep smoking. So I'm just a little biased on that. But I think it's a public park. People pay their taxes. They should be able to go there. If they want to smoke, they can. If we want to put up a smoke-free area, or I mean, a smoke, smoking area where people can go where they can smoke, they can do that. But to me, this seems to be a bigger issue for littering than it does the smoking. And we already got laws on the books that prevent littering. So I just think this is a ordinance that's really not going to do anything. It sounds, from one side, it's not enforceable, but then it might be, because it might have to get the cops involved. But you don't have to get the cops involved. It's really gray. I don't think they really know what's going on besides, they just don't want people to smoke in public parks. And I think it's wrong, because if you pay your taxes, you should be able to go there. I mean, let's not be discriminatory, and let's be inclusive. That's what Bellevue says they are.
Councilman Blood.
So as a taxpayer, then you're okay with the fact that our bathrooms are ruined by the smokers, and picnic tables are ruined by the smokers? Because, hey, we're all taxpayers, right?
Anybody can ruin it. I haven't seen any proof of that. Have you seen proof of that?
Every single Saturday when I'm down at Washington Park, I do, actually. And I'm, I think Councilman Preister, who has helped me pick up cigarette butts before, would say the same thing. I think we'd get Mike down here to talk about some of the damage. I, I, I have no issues with adult smoking. That's your choice. It's your body, your choice. But we keep throwing the word taxpayers out. The taxpayers that don't smoke, and the ones that do smoke, if they saw the amount of damage being done to the public facilities by the smokers, I think they'd be very unhappy about that, more unhappy than us putting up a sign saying, please don't smoke in a park. I used to work for the state prison system, and we almost had a riot the first time we tried to go smoke-free. I can tell you that if taxpayers saw the amount of damage done in the prison system by smokers, again, putting cigarettes out against walls, putting cigarettes out on furniture. We can keep talking about taxpayers, but we're not talking about the other side. So although you guys may be, because I see you shaking your heads no over there, very courteous smokers, I'm telling you that if we got Mike down here, that we would probably find that there's substantial monies that are paid to correct the issues caused by people that are not courteous smokers. So take the smoking part out of it and look at the damage part of it. If we're really trying to be, address what the taxpayers want, I don't think the taxpayers want their money wasted on people that, that burn public property.
Well, as a taxpayer, I don't like, I go to the park, I pick up my dog's waste. Other people don't.
That's right.
So we eliminate dog parks. Shouldn't have them there anymore. I enjoy the farmer's market.
But we put up a sign and ask them not to do that. But we aren't calling the police every time they leave something there.
I'm a taxpayer, and I don't like them trapping there. So we need to eliminate dogs in the dog park. It means the same thing. I don't like litter in the parks, but you know, people litter in the parks who are not smokers. I went there Sunday after the farmer's market. There was litter there. Not a lot, but there was some. I know you can't eliminate it all. So maybe we should eliminate the farmer's market. Maybe we should eliminate all the stuff that prevents, that has litter going there. I mean, if we're going to get down to the nitty-gritty, we want a beautiful park, a beautiful city. We just got to start eliminating stuff. So no smoking, no farmer's market, no, no, let's not bring soda. That's, obesity is a bigger thing than, you know, smoking. That's harming more kids, so.
How is somebody being fat hurting somebody else's child, though? That when, if you are eating a steak and you're obese, you're not forcing that steak down into the child's mouth. When you're out in public and you're smoking-
I don't know.
-that child is forced to, to breathe in your secondhand smoke. You're talking about apples to oranges. That's an apples to oranges thing. And as far as eliminating the dogs, we're not saying eliminate the dogs. We put up a sign and say, please don't leave your poo. It's the same thing. Please don't smoke in the park. And again, I think, are you a smoker?
No, I don't smoke.
Okay.
That's, that's the funny thing. I don't smoke, but I actually fight for people's rights. And this is America, and people have rights. And this is one of the rights. And I mean, also, we keep talking about the youth here. You have to be 18 years of older to buy cigarettes, unless it's changed. I don't know. I mean, but that's a taxpayer, in my mind. Anytime you spend money, you're a taxpayer, right?
What age do you have to be to inhale secondhand smoke?
Okay, then we talk about cars. We talk, we should give, eliminate the grills in the parks there, because they emit smoke. Smoke is bad. That's toxic, right? Charcoal grills shouldn't be burning anything. I mean, we can go on and on. We're just, it's, it's just, it's just ridiculous is what it is. And it is government control, like they said. It's plain and simple. I just, I just disagree with it. We can sit here and argue all day, but.
Thank you, Brian. Are there others?
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. And even though I'm coughing, I am not a smoker. It's allergies. I've got, I've got mixed feelings about this too, because way back when I was used to drink and go to bars, I used to get sick to smoke. And I said someday I'm going to own a bar. It was no, a no-smoking bar. And that didn't happen, although I had an opportunity. I didn't do it. But the thing that concerns me is that I've been down to the farmer's market almost every Saturday too, and I haven't seen anybody smoking down there personally. And I haven't seen, where I go, I don't see people smoking that much out in the public where I'm at. As I said, I go down to the doggy park, Jewel Park, and well, so far, only one time I've ever seen one person in the park smoke. So I, it's, it's, what I'm, what I don't like, not just smoking, but I'm, I'm kind of against all these rules that we're having to control this all the time. It starts at the nation, and coming down to the states and the cities. We can't do this, we can't do that. So I, I don't, I don't see that problem. So, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't see that problem as much as, uh, maybe, uh, these other people do. Uh, maybe there is a problem when you, uh, when you, uh, in teenagers, when they smoke, but I, uh, yeah, I'm not around that many teenagers anymore. But I used to talk to, uh, teenagers and tell them that, when I saw them, I said, boy, you guys are not really too smart. And they'd say, why is that? I said, well, you're letting a bunch of businessmen control what you wanting to buy cigarettes, Joe Camel. And the businessman said, hey, how can we get these young kids to smoke? And they said, well, why don't we, why don't we make an image of Joe Camel, and then we'll encourage them to, encourage them to smoke? So, uh, I'm not sure if just, just the, uh, controlling it in the parks will make a difference. But certainly our, our cigarette companies and the ones that are pushing, like she was saying about pushing cigarettes, that's where we have to go, but, uh, you know, I don't know which way you're gonna vote, and I guess it won't make much difference in my situation. But, uh, I, I kinda like my freedom. Thank you.
Are there others? See none, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council? Oh, there is a motion and a second? Any other discussion questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is two to three.
Motion fails. The resolution fails. Thank you all for coming out to speak this evening. Item number seven, liquor license, none. Ordinance for adoption, third reading, none. Ordinance for public hearing, none. Item number nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading, nine A, ordinance three eight two two. Megan, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three eight two two, an ordinance to amend section six dash one of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to animal care in the city of Bellevue, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be on October the twenty-sixth. Nine B, ordinance three eight two three. Megan, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight two three, an ordinance to amend sections twelve dash fifty-seven, twelve dash fifty-nine, and twelve dash sixty pertaining to the sale, distribution, storage, and discharge of fireworks in the city of Bellevue, to repeal such section in heretofore existing and provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will also be October twenty-sixth. Nine C, ordinance three eight two four. Please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight two four, an ordinance to amend sections five dot oh nine, five dot ten, and five dot eleven. Ordinance number three six one nine, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to the height and lot requirements of the RS dash eighty-four, single-family residential, RS dash seventy-two, single-family residential, and RD dash sixty duplex residential zones, to repeal, to repeal such sections in heretofore existing, to provide an existing date of this ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. Nine D, ordinance three eight two five. Megan, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance num, ordinance number three eight two five, an ordinance to amend section nine dot zero nine, ordinance number three six one nine, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to fences, to repeal such section in heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. Nine E, ordinance three eight two six.
Ordinance number three eight two six, an ordinance to amend ordinance number three seven oh four, City of Bellevue subdivision ordinance by deleting chapter five A, lot consolidations, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Nine F, ordinance three eight two seven.
Ordinance number three eight two seven, an ordinance to amend section twenty-one dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding cutting, injuring, et cetera, trees, shrubs, et cetera, in the city of Bellevue, to repeal section twenty-one dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. All items under nine, A, B, C, D, E, and F will have the second reading and public hearing on October the twenty-second. Item number ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Ten A, public hearing on the request for a conditional use permit to erect a hundred-foot se- stealth tow, cell tower and equipment shelter. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Welcome.
Me again. Jenny Byrd, sixty-five nineteen East Topath, East Syracuse, New York, one three oh five seven. Since our last meeting, we had a, come together with a couple of the city council members and the mayor, and, um, a few of the representatives from the neighborhoods in the surrounding area of Pilgrim's Landing Church, Lutheran Church, I apologize. And we did come to a understanding that a lower tower height would be amenable to the neighboring residents. Um, I did take it back to Verizon, and they came back and said that they would be able to, um, go to a sixty, I'm sorry, a ninety-six-foot center line, which would be a one-hundred-foot tower. So, um, that's reflected in the new construction drawings that have been presented to you this evening. If you have any questions, I'll keep writing my address.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Preister.
Just to thank you for going back as we asked to meet with the neighbors and to come to a compromise. I know it wasn't the first compromise, but it was another one, and it just makes it so much easier. So, we do appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Harold Harris. I reside at one four one zero one South Twenty-first Street in Bellevue, Nebraska. I would like to thank Mayor Sanders and other members of the city council for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the camouflage cell tower to be constructed at Pigeon Lutheran Church. Last month, due to the extreme height of the tower with respect to other structures and immediate area, I respectfully asked the council to, will they request SBA to consider a lower height? In response to the council request, the SBA representatives, Representative Ms. Jenny Byrd, met with members of the surrounding neighborhood organizations, organizations, residents of the areas, Mayor Sanders, Councilman Cook, Councilwoman Blood, to discuss the situation and come to a compromise. During the meeting, the residents requested SBA to consider benchmark cellular capabilities with heights of ninety and a hundred feet. The residents did not have the resources or personnel to conduct the analysis themselves. We trusted SBA and Verizon. Our request was equivalent to putting the fox in the hen house. Even though the fox was in the hen house, we're pleased to inform you that we believe Ms. Byrd, SBA, Verizon, and Verizon were fair in their analysis when they decided a ninety-six-foot cellular tower will meet their cellular needs. I contacted several neighborhood associations and residents. The groups and residents have no objections to the ninety-six-foot height. We understand in today's technological environment cellular service is a way of life, and the future will show more uses of electronic devices. I would like to offer one point for future consideration. Earlier, Councilman Cook stated that he thought the city could benefit from a study by notable experts in the cellular field, including representative from the Bellevue Planning Commission, to conduct a study of the Bellevue area to determine appropriate locations and heights of cell towers that would been, that would provide the greatest coverage. Such a study will eliminate the council from reviewing detailed proposals each time a company desires to construct a tower, thereby avoiding reinventing the wheel. Currently, cell towers are being constructed in established neighborhoods. This is equivalent to changing the rules after the game has started. In many cases, we don't know the intentions of the cell companies or the landowners. As Jane Madison said in support of the U.S. Constitution in seventeen eighty-eight, if all men were angels, there would be no need for government. His point was that all men, self-evidently, are not angels, thus we need government. To make the situation more practical for us, we need the Bellevue City Council to ensure appropriate and fair cell tower construction. Again, Mayor Sanders and members of the council, please accept my sincere appreciation for having the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I appreciate your dedication and genuine efforts to make Bellevue the good life and the police department in making Bellevue a safe place to live. Pending your questions, this concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? See none. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Preister.
Mr. Harris, just to thank you, also to you and to the neighbors for your willingness to compromise, to go to the meeting, but then to follow up, so rather than just not showing up tonight, you took the time to write things out, to do it in a, a very logical fashion. It was well-presented, and I thank you and all the neighbors for your concern, and you too making Bellevue a better place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak on this item? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to thank Ms. Byrd, uh, Mr. Harris, and I believe the other gentleman, was it Mr. Gilbert, that sort of ran that meeting? I think he was a representative from the church. I thought it was a very good meeting that ran. I thank the mayor and Councilwoman Blood for showing up also. I know everybody is not happy. There was people in that room that wanted a hundred-and-thirty-foot cell tower. There was people that did not want a cell tower. This is the most public input that we've had on a cell tower since I've been on this, on this council, and it's very, they're very difficult. But I want to thank you for running that meeting, and I think everybody, uh, presented their information, no matter what side they were on, in a very nice, pleasant, and professional manner. I have been asking, and I don't know how to move forward on this, but, Mr. Harris, I agree with you a hundred percent. I feel that we are in the backseat, and the cell towers are driving the vehicle. And every time one of these come forward, we struggle with them. And, and we have to understand, the only place to probably put these as we go into older neighborhoods are where there are, is land available, churches, schools, parks, and other areas that have, you know, a good sizable amount of land, which are very restrictive and very limited in older neighborhoods. I feel, and I don't know, Mr. Burlowitz, and I realize that I can't make the decision. I don't know how to move forward. I would ask that the planning department, through the planning commission, maybe take a look at this and get with cell companies, uh, in particular, I think they contract a lot, like, uh, Ms. Byrd is with SBA. I think the one we approved last, uh, meeting was with another company. And try to locate the areas where to- towers are needed and where we are the ones pushing this and not being pushed. Now, maybe that's not easy to do, but we always get into a situation that we gotta have a cell tower here, and we can't move it a block or two. And we're filled box dead. And I think if we would designate areas, I don't know, if you go up, I know there are low, lower sitting land. If you go up creeks, we got a lot of creeks through our town. I don't know if you can get around the interstate. I don't know where the greatest areas are, but I think we need to be in the driver's seat and, and work with the cell companies, because we all want our devices to work. And I don't want to continue to going through this every time a cell tower comes, because people say, not my backyard. Well, it's not fair to push it in someone else's backyard. You want your device to start up and work, you're gonna get them in your backyard, as long as we continue the use of these devices. And I'd like to be the one that control where they go and get cell companies then to put two or three or four companies, Verizon, Sprint, whoever, on these towers, and so we drive it, and here's where they are allowed to go. And address maybe some of the height issues, um, on this, uh, process too. Thank you.
Mr. Burlowitz.
Yeah, um, I guess Councilmember Cook, um, you indicated that you'd like to see the planning commission. I, I, I would view that that would be something that for the planning commission to take up with planning staff. Uh, first of all, determine how best to go about that, uh, whether it be just working with Verizon or local, uh, cell entities, or whether that'd be something where it'd be a, you know, someone who does those type of analysis that would be, uh, uh, go out for proposals, determine what, what the fee would be and what the extent would be. But I, I guess what I would suggest at the, the planning commission, and, and that would be really, because all those come through the planning commission. So, it would be important to have them on board, and they obviously be, are an advisory, uh, body. So, with that information, uh, that would be something I think that would be appropriate at that level initially.
And, Mr. Burlowitz, I appreciate that. I, I, even a plan or maybe something from Mr. Shuchak, I, I think, you know, maybe he could put together something, and, and then we could look at it and decide how to move forward. But I got one question for Mr. Sullivan. Um, I believe this is a very long contract, and I know it's privately owned land, but this is a, um, a conditional use permit. I read an email today, a very lengthy email, and I don't recall if it was sent to me Sunday or when, but I read it today where there was some concern that, I did not catch this, but I thought they said this contract was like for fifty-five years. And the, the concern in the email was, what if the church isn't there in ten or fifteen years or twenty years? And someone then wants to move in and redevelop it, and that the, the, uh, structure is right in the middle of their building that they wanna build. I mean, what, is there something that if, if the title to this property changed, does it come back to us? How do, how would we address this versus a cell company say, I got a fifty-five-year contract, and I'm not moving my tower?
Mr. Sullivan.
That lease will stay in place as long as, uh, the company wants to keep it in place and makes their payments, regardless of what's there.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Blood.
I don't wanna get off too much off to- topic, because we've already done that. But I, I don't disagree with getting a committee together. I understand what you're saying. And I, we talked about this after the meeting when we were in the parking lot. But there's some engineering that's involved with this. We can go ahead and find locations and property that we think would be appropriate for towers. But say, within the next five years, demographics were to change and shift, and then the usage would change and shift. And so, although we may have areas that are delegated for the towers, that may not, and you may wanna support me on this, I don't know. But, um, I think an engineer that would work for these companies would tell you that the science behind that would be not definitive. The science behind that would be bad science, because every time they go to put in a tower, they're not looking from five years back. They're looking from the usage that's pertaining to that year. And so, we can go ahead and we can do that work and use staff time to do that work. But my gut tells me that the science of it is gonna prevent us from really utilizing that land to its full potential, and that if we're gonna go to this extent, that we should bring somebody in that has that experience, that can address that. It's like me telling a developer, hey, I've got some great land I want you to build on instead of this land over here, even though this land over here has access to roads, electricity, parks, sewer. I think this land is better for you, and I picked it out five years ago when we had a committee. And I, I know I'm taking it to the total opposite end here, but I'm just saying, if we do something like this, let's make sure that we have the players that truly know what's going on, because our staff's not qualified for that. No offense, but our staff's not qualified for that. And the only people that are qualified for that are the engineers that do work for the cellphone companies.
Mr. Burlowitz.
And I guess that was, uh, what I was alluding to. Um, you know, it, my planning commission would be the, the entity within the city that would initially, um, address it. Um, but that's one I referred to. We might have to, at some point, go out for a proposal. Uh, and also determine, uh, who does that type of analysis, what's involved. Um, the Councilmember Blood's correct, our staff's not qualified to do that. Uh, but we could research in terms of who, who would do it, what would the cost be, what would be the end product uh, that you're looking for, and so we can, we can do that. But, yeah, we, clearly, we're not, um, we're not skilled in doing that type of analysis internally.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you. And, and I agree, Councilmember, uh, Blood and, and Mr. Burlowitz. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. We don't have the expertise. But I think we are a community with a big enough size, and with all the electronics and the service that we have, I think these companies could afford to come together with maybe our planning department and try to just work on this. I, I, my experience when I was on another board was we were looking at a cell tower, and it was over a valley. And the placement of it, I thought, was very inappropriate, and it did not pass. But I will tell you that on having conversations thereafter that meeting, that when I was asking the person- that when I was asking the person that would know, why does it have to be here? The response is, well, you know, it's high, it's a big, long tower. Otherwise, we'd probably have to put two towers down in this valley to get our signal out. But to me, that's then a business decision. And maybe those two sites for two different towers would be better sites in the city of Bellevue than one tower. So I, I don't have the answers. But I think by asking the engineers from these companies to at least help, they don't, they don't know the layout of Bellevue. They look at a problem area. They, I believe, I've never done it. They, they have a problem area where their service is maybe questionable, slow. They want to upgrade it. They look to what is to their advantage. What is most cost-effective, the biggest bang for their buck, et cetera. And I'm simply asking, everybody does that. I'm not disagreeing with that. Is that if we bring them together and we maybe show them completely the area of Bellevue in our ETJ area and how can you service this over the next five, ten, fifteen years, we may find locations that we're not doing this battle every time one of these items come in front of the council. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Carmichael.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit to erect a hundred-foot stealth cell tower and equipment shelter of the applicant SBA Towers Six LLC, location twenty-three fifteen Fairview Road.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See no more? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, none. Item twelve, current business. Twelve A, B, and C is under consent agenda. Twelve D, approval of annual software service agreement with QTEL, the evidence processing barcode system. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve E, approval and authorization for the mayor to sign inter-local agreement for American Heroes Park Concept Design with MAPPA. Mr. Burks.
I just wanted to let everyone know that Greg Yule from MAPPA is here and Matt Knutson from Excess Design is here. This is to continue the planning for the Missouri River Research Station that we have partnered with at UNO. I remember almost a year ago, I said I wouldn't be back here to ask for money unless we had a grant for it. And MAPPA has been, is excited to partner with us on this project.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Burke? Mr. Carmichael.
I have no questions, but I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. And thank you for your patience this evening. Thank you. Twelve F, approval and execute the U.S. Department of Housing Urban Development Funding Approval Agreement for fiscal year 2015, CDBG funding in amount of twenty, two thousand eight hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve the spending approval agreement for the fiscal year 2015 for CDBG funding in the amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, city administrator's report. Are there any questions for Mr. Berlowitz?
As usual, I and/or staff are here to answer questions.
I see none. Item number fourteen, public request to be heard. Any member of the public address in the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Thirty-five Regarding the Principles of Conduct and Decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city official employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual is so attacked as an elected official, a city official or employee, or member of the general public. And City Code Section Two dash six eight, Regarding the Matter of Addressing the Council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes.
Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. One thing I didn't talk about, the smoking situation, was I tell people, if you want to live as long as I have, just don't smoke and wear your seatbelt. So maybe you all live as long as I do if you do those two things. I watched the meeting that I spoke, when I spoke last meeting. And I think I kind of jumbled up what my dog Roma, what she is. She's a soft-coated wheaten. And she is a terrier. She is tenacious. I also forgot to mention that before I ran for mayor, Mayor Sanders and myself had a conversation on the, on the telephone. And it was complimentary what she said, what she said. She thought of me as the bulldog of Bellevue. Well, I may be the bulldog of Bellevue, but she would be, she would even be better than me if she could get here and speak. Couple of things. I noticed that Mr. Prester was nominated for the Audit Committee. And I, two things. I would think that the one who should be on it is the one who had two hundred questions and only had about half of them answered. And that would be Jim Mudry. So why wasn't he appointed? Another thing is Dave Sambo was on. He's an ex-councilman. And I like to be appointed. I'm an ex-councilperson. I'm certainly have been very vocal on the financial situations here in Bellevue. The word, I think the thing that people say is that keep your, keep your friends close, but keep your enemies even closer. So if you want me on that Audit Committee, I certainly would like to be on that. There's, there's nobody in this city has been more vocal about trying to get the city straightened out as far as his financial situation. The other thing I'm just going to talk about just briefly is that I've been here a pretty long time. I've seen quite a few things happen. I've seen things happen in Papillion. And of course, I talk about how good they've been doing, but there was once upon a time when Papillion wasn't doing so well. Their mayor wasn't so good. They elected, appointed officials weren't doing so well. And they turned that around. And the way they turned it around was they got different people in there to run the city. And I think right now Bellevue has a cult that is not right for, for the city. We've got people in leadership positions, appointed, elected, that really haven't done their job in order for us to be the city we could be. And I, I think it's something, I don't know how it's going to change, when it's going to change, but we do need changes. Thank you.
Are there others? See none. I'll close the public request to be heard. Item fifteen, executive session, none. Item sixteen, adjournment. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.